Sycamore City Council, here's your agenda. I don't know why I have a clue why they're gonna vote and discuss anything to do with Stacy Watkins. Ashburn already has Sunday beer sales. Jail contract, this is the one that was in the paper two weeks ago. Department heads just their reports, public input, and then we're outta here.
No, I mean for the allotment.
Alright.
Do I know you at all?
Of coming together to work together for the good of our community and for your honor. We ask that you would give us clarity of mind and integrity in everything that we do. That Jesus might be honored, in his name we ask. Amen.
Amen.
If y'all would let us stand and play the leadings.
Glad to lead, truly glad that you're going to the States of America. Due to the role of which changes one nation under God, individual would never be in justice at all.
Thank you. Okay, item three, discuss and vote to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as stated.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brown to approve as read. Seconded by Councilman Yon, all in favor. Okay, alright, so carry. Item four, discuss and vote to approve minutes.
Move to approve both sets of minutes as stated.
Second. Okay, item by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Easter to approve as stated, all in favor. Okay. So carry. Item five, discuss and vote on you library representative. I don't know who put this on the agenda.
You better know, we just approved it.
You did.
Well, we wanted you to. They're here.
Alright, stand up, stand up near and deuce yourself.
Oh, sure.
Go ahead.
My name's Kristy Casimiro, I'm the new branch manager here, and I'm thrilled that you're reappointing Mr. Easter. So, great, nice to meet you all.
Okay, any discussion?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Kristy, yes, that's right, how do you spell your last name? Casimiro, C.A.S.I.M.I.R.O. Okay, it's Portuguese.
Your husband works with us.
Yes, yeah, he's a scientist, he works at ABA.
You'll be happy to know our library doesn't have books in it anymore. Oh, not kidding, no, really not.
Yeah.
College bookstore doesn't sell textbooks anymore.
So, I don't understand.
Now, the library.
You had the library, huh?
Well, he said, discuss and vote, that's why I had.
There's no vote required.
Yeah, no vote required or anything, I didn't think so. Alright.
Well, I believe the bylaws.
Well, I mean, it depends on what your laws, what your committee appointments don't require a vote by your board, that's all that. Our board just has to know that you, this council, said that's your representative on the regional, on the library board, that's all there is.
Okay, do I have a motion to Fred Easter be appointed to the library?
So move.
Second.
Alright, alright, we got a motion and second, all in favor. Okay, looks like you are elected.
I figured that.
Okay, uh-oh. Item six. I know what this is all over, and I tell you what, there's a dear friend of mine, Mr. Stacy Watkins. He's an engineer out of Tifton, Georgia, and a very good friend. This is the guy that I want working on projects, so the project needs to be discussed real quick. John, you wanna?
Yeah, we got the.
Catch the council update.
Lead, I've talked to, most of you, we got the lead service line inventory coming up, and I've talked to Stacy and see if I can get him to help us with it some, and I'm gonna kinda turn it over to Stacy and let him tell you a little more about.
Alright, thanks for the introduction, Mr. Wayne, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, too.
Mr. Allen, good to see you, and the rest of y'all with mayor and council. What Sean's referring to is, is some of the mandates that's been coming down here lately, and there's a lot of money being put into, into local governments through some of this Build Back Better program that the current administration has. But anyway, there's money out there to help municipalities do a lead copper, basically it's just about anything other than PBC type service line inventory. And it's money to pay for the preparation of what it's gonna take to fix that, okay? And to the lack of better term, they're giving out money to help the cities come up with a plan, okay? And then there'll be future programs come about to help pay for that, okay? Most towns over the years, galvanized service lines. Now, we've done a lot of projects in the past where we've replaced the mains, but what happened, and we'll replace up to the meter, but we don't replace from the meter to the people's house. Well, that's what this program is, is to replace those mains up to the people's house. And most houses probably in the, probably from the mid seventies back were all galvanized. Lord knows, we put a lot of copper tubing in Tifton over the years, that used to be their standard, they're even replacing that. You know, we don't necessarily have a lot of lead pipes anymore, but there's still some places out there that's got lead goose necks and basically pipes that were put together with lead. It don't necessarily show up in your water samples, but it's still there, and that program goes to take care of that, too. Now, what this is, is the application is due at the end of this month. So, it's something that, we need to spend, you know, a little bit of time, put an application in and send it up there, and we'll see what they come back at. It does seem that they're allocating about fifty dollars a service. That seems to be what it comes up with, to come up with this plan. But in order to get that money to replace those services, you gotta have this done first. And that's essentially, I think, what we're asking, if the mayor and council would approve the application to be submitted by the end of the month.
Yes, sir.
I like your haircut, too, by the way.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you have my provisional trust. Are they suggesting that a residential water line be replaced at fifty dollars?
No, sir, that's just what they're stating, that is what it seems to be the average of the money that they're giving towards the study.
Okay.
Now.
Based on your experience, what kind of money is each one of these residents talking about?
Well, that's, they haven't given out money yet for the actual replacement, so I can't really project that part of it. It's easy to say fifty dollars a service, 'cause everybody knows how many customers it got, you got about three hundred customers, I believe, talking with Sean. So, but whenever, now see, this, there was already a previous group of projects that has already been submitted on the last go around.
Right.
And we got some money for Ashburn to do that, but no money's been given out yet, or they haven't had a call for projects yet that I'm aware of, all of the actual service replacements. I'll know a little bit more about that down the road, and I can let you know. I don't, it's, to me, I think, I would like to know as part of the information that we get, are they in the back of the houses? You know, some of the projects that we've had here on the west side of town, it was an alleyway that went up there, we moved all those to the front, so that's gonna cost way more than, if the lines were already in the front of the house. Now, the one thing about here is everything we did on this side of town, we're all poly tubing, but that's up to the meter, not from the meter to the house.
Well, I had a second water line running in my yard when I bought Doris McCord's house, and that second water line was poly butylene.
Not good.
And, yeah, exactly. And you know your business, so you know what poly butylene resulted in.
That's class action lawsuit back in the day, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So.
But it's, we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to be able to inform our residents, what kind of money does it go cost them if we find lead connectors?
Well, the money that's supposed to be coming is what's going to the house, now not in the house.
Right.
And, but hopefully.
From the meter to the.
From the meter.
To the house.
To five feet off from the house, that's what I'm, what I'm understanding.
Well, if it's in the house, that's.
That's a whole other ballgame right there, I don't even know if I would tackle that one. But anyway, that's, you're not gonna get anything unless you submit something, that's just what it boils down to. Yes, sir.
If I understand right, we're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of anticipated fifty dollars per service inventory. That's not actually doing any replacing, that's just to locate what is in place.
Right, it's part of the inventory where you will know, does it have backlog preventer? I mean, we're gonna be, basically, you're gonna have to dig down on the other side of the meter, see what type of material is, it's.
Now, you know that there are gonna be some property owners who are gonna say, get off my property.
Probably.
That's going to happen, we don't want.
I'm sure it will, yeah.
It's going to happen.
Yeah, I'm sure it will.
I ain't in favor of getting on big property, private property, because, I mean, we looking for lead and water. You get people out there on your property, they gonna die from lead poisoning, coming out of a shotgun.
True.
You know, I don't need that.
Most of this inventory is gonna be what's on the other side of the meter box, okay? Few feet, but now, some meters may be, some meters may be on private property, and technically, if that's the case, you've got a prescriptive easement up to that, anyway. And as part of that relocation of these mains, I would highly recommend moving the meter back to the right way, anyway.
Yeah.
Sean, do we have any meters that are?
I would've thought if we did the west side and the east side.
Maybe, not many.
Did they come back in?
Most everything's been moved through the road. Yeah, I don't know of anything on this side of town, I just know what's on that side of town, I haven't done any.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did, both sides?
I'm sorry, I didn't start doing this too long.
You did that side, not the other side.
Yeah, but most of what I remember was behind the houses on this side of the road.
Right, and the house, most of them.
Yeah, that was in that alley.
Yeah.
Yeah. Some of the other things that me and Sean had talked about, is part of this Build Back Better program, and some of the money that's, you know, just talking with Jifa, they're expecting to be a lot of money that's coming down to be dispersed out to rural communities. And that's probably gonna be in a form of various different projects, okay? Jifa has, has started over the years, you know, a call for projects where they will look at the city's demographics, their financial status, all that stuff, and they will, based off of the need, they will be willing to give you a loan and give you forgiveness on some percentage of that. In other words, we do a million dollar project, and they look at, they look at your financials and that sort of thing, and the need of the project, they have a criteria that they'll follow. They may come back and say, we'll give you that million dollars, but you only have to pay back half million. Pretty good rate of return, okay? But you have to submit it to find out, okay? Once you find out, you do not necessarily have to proceed any further than that. If you say, if they come back and say, ah, we're only gonna give you ten percent, and you really don't wanna go that route and accumulate that additional debt, you can just say, appreciate it, but don't thank you, we'll go on. So, there's no commitment to it. But we recently got the city of Brockston two million dollars, and they probably have been given eighty percent forgiveness on that. And that was to repack the tanks, redo the chemical feed buildings, 'cause there's wooden buildings that roost all in, redoing all their lift stations and that sort of thing. That call for projects starts at, I believe it's October first, but it's open for about four months, so there's a period there that you can put together a package of whatever you decide, and it says as chief, it's gonna have to be water and sewer related, okay, no roads. But anyway, and those are due, I think, sometime in February, that they would be due. But the thing about it is, the communities that have done their homework ahead of time and gotten what is called a categorical exclusion, a CE, from the various, I call them the alphabet agencies, USD, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps of Engineers. We basically submit them a narrative of what we're doing, we could say, you know, we're replacing water line in a neighborhood, you know, most of the time I don't get no response back, but historic preservation will wanna know what kind of houses I'm gonna buy, I'll have to do a little. Anyway, that's a process, it takes several weeks. If you have that in hand, by the time the end of that call for projects and Jifa will reviews that, they will take care of those folks before the people who do not have a CE. So, I guess what I'm saying is, if you're interested in replacing all the lift stations and your pumps, or higher efficiency pumps, or any type of project water sewer related. Okay? We need to be, we need to be doing some homework to be ready to submit and be competitive.
What is our first step, then, in accomplishing this?
Well, you might wanna pick a project, okay? You know, drinking water program is totally different from the clean water program. Clean water being sewer, sanitary sewer related. I could tell you that, let's say, let's say you come in and ask to put a new tank in a well in downtown, I might would say, let's find another spot that's not on, you know, during the historic, we'd have to talk about it to see, because I don't wanna get caught up into submitting something that's gonna. They may come back and say, we're not gonna give you this categorical, the categorical exclusion is basically me sending letters, them saying, okay, send me an okay letter back, it's just a timing. Now, another community that we've done work with, getting them, they didn't have an elevated tank, they had two hydromatic tanks on the ground, okay? We got them funding for an elevated tank, nope, no CE on that one, you gotta go through the full environmental process, which means that, you know, it went from being a sixty day thing to a six month thing. And that doesn't, if I know, if you told me you wanna do that type of project, I'd say, let's wait till next year. And go ahead and do all of that and be ready then. But now there's still enough time to do, some of the projects that we talked about is a SCADA system for the city. A SCADA system is essentially an automated way to operate your wells, to know if the lift station is in a failure mode, if the generator hasn't turned on, if you have, it's basically a telemetry system. You know, those are good things to have, especially if you have, you know, you don't have a fifty man public works department, you need something that can help as much as you can. That would be something that, to me, would be easy to get a CE. Another project would be automated meters, okay? Instead of having to have somebody dedicated to walking and looking at every single meter, that we would have a drive-by system where they have a radio read meter. You would just drive around, you have a computer with a software in it, it picks up all the meters, you're done with your meter reading.
Sean, don't we already have that?
No.
No?
No.
No, we chose not to do them whenever we couldn't use them.
Well, even back when we did those projects, that wasn't even really a thing then. But those are examples of projects that, if we could just put the CE paperwork in, then we could go ahead and get that, that would probably be a fundable project. But like I said, whatever we decide, you throw up there, if they come back and it's not, it's not an acceptable rate, or, it's still a better rate than going to the banks or anything, or bond market, but, you know, if they didn't give you enough forgiveness, like, I mean, and we've had projects that they would be willing to give you the loan, but no forgiveness, okay? And they just said, no, we'll wait, try again. And it's a competition. They, Jifa knows how much money that they have to play with, what they're willing to give out as free money, and it's a competition, that's all it is. And to be honest, we, the money that we got for Brockston was really discretionary money through Senator Warnock's office. Discretionary money, which came back when the Denver desk got back in office. But it had to go through Jifa, okay? That's how they got that. So, but to answer your question, is pick a project. You know, just by talking with Sean, the automatic meter reads, the SCADA system, those are things that would get you to be more efficient. You know, let's say, for instance, somebody come in here and they got a water bill, and they were complaining about it, you could look at that and say, well, your water bill, it really went up on May fifteenth. Did you turn the water hose off that week?
Let's not say what time.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's something like that, the SCADA system, you know, there's various different SCADA systems, you can buy the cheap one, you can buy the mid range, and you can buy the Mac Daddy one. You could even have it set up where it would tell Sean that the chlorine tanks are low, time to replace the chlorine tanks, you know. Or you could have it as detailed as you want, or as minimal as you want, but if you buy one, you make sure that it's expandable, you change it as you go. The lift station projects, if you decided to do that, those are projects that are, if it's already there, it's kinda hard for historic preservation or the Army Corps, say you can't do that, but it's already there. But it's those new projects that I run into a lot of problems with environmental issues with it, new, breaking new ground.
I guess that need to sit down with you and Sean and see, and representative to go over prioritizing projects.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to, do we need to put you on, do we need to put you on record, or how do we need to go about it? The simplest way, please.
That's up to y'all, okay? I've got, I've got contracts for cities, and I've got cities that call me and ask me to do something, and I do it by the hour, I mean, it's whatever you're comfortable with. The way I kinda like to operate on some of this stuff right here, I'm willing to prepare this paperwork for you, because I, if it's a project that I think's gonna be a problem, I'll tell you, and I'll tell you I'll do it for it. If it's a project that I think is doable and fundable, I'll ride with you down that way. But if you decide not to accept it, I would like to be considered to be reimbursed for my time.
That's reasonable.
Does anybody else on the council think that the best, through contact with Sean, for this matter, because Sean knows probably what we need more than we know what we need?
Yeah, I would.
Absolutely.
I would think so, yeah. I mean, I've got experience in water sewer streets and so on, but Sean is the public works guy.
And one other point, I wanna, I wanna make it a part of the record, you're showing your age when you use expressions like Mac Daddy.
Yeah. I'm feeling it, too.
Don't get me started.
And we can't afford that either.
But, I mean, I'll give you all a few days to think about it, the lead and copper stuff needs to be handled, but that's not, that's just an application to get submitted, so we can go ahead and work on that.
I think that's low hanging fruit, 'cause we better do it anyway.
Yes, sir, I agree.
And it needs to be. Do we?
Wait, wait, wait. Uh, yes, sir.
Do we need a motion to retain his services for funding of the lead inventory?
I shall move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second, all in favor. United, so carry.
Yes, sir, alright, we'll get started with that, and Sean, you know, do you wanna maybe prioritize a list or something like that?
I'll get a list together.
And then I'll come back and we'll sit down and go from there. I think that, you know, I don't know about the status of your lift stations, but if I remember right, they're probably the original ones. Yeah, that was done whenever the sewer system was installed. I'd say that the efficiency of those is pretty bad, just from the age of it. And I said, I highly recommend the SCADA system, I actually kinda like the SCADA system better than I do the automatic meter reading. I mean, you may say something there, 'cause you have to go read the meters, but that SCADA system can be set up, that it notifies him, or you, 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 all of you, or whatever you want. It'll dial it and say, you got something wrong at lift station, generator didn't cut on. One of my clients with the hurricane that just came in, only the water system guy got the code. He was out of town. The generator had a faulty switch in it that been, been letting everybody know, but it got to be where it didn't get addressed. But it needs to go to more than one person. So, they didn't have water, had a brand new generator, no water, that was not good, but anyway. I'll be back, I'll get started with this other part, and then I'll come back and go through a list of projects and go from there. I appreciate it, y'all.
I would like to stay here.
All of y'all. And I'll tell you, Sean, you know, I lived in Cairo, Georgia for a long time.
You won't hold that against you, obviously.
But when I got the three oldest out of school, I moved. And I'm seven minutes down forty-one from here, so.
So, where'd you go to college?
I went to Southern Tech when I got there, but then it changed to Southern College of Technology, Southern Poly, and that hurt my feelings when I went to council, so, yeah, that's where I went to school. But if you need me, call me, I'll be, I'll be here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Stacy.
I know some of you, I know some of your policemen too well, coming through here tonight. Y'all take care.
Item seven is going to be tabled, 'cause there will be no vote, we talking about Sunday beer sales. Before any of that can be changed, it has to be advertised in the paper, how many weeks was it?
I guess once a week, three weeks, between seven and sixty days, and it has to have two readings.
Yeah, alright, so, we're gonna be submitting something to you, Ben, to run that in the paper.
Got a question about that.
Yeah.
If we don't change the, if we don't change the ordinance, we don't have to advertise anything, we don't have to vote on anything.
Right, we don't, we don't change it, you're right.
Has anybody on the council made a motion to change it?
No.
I didn't think so.
Nope.
At the risk of idle curiosity, is anybody planning to make a motion to change it?
Somebody give me input here. Somebody give me input here.
Nope.
Nope.
Alan?
Apparently, like consensus, it's gonna stay like this.
It seems to me we're, we're trying to table a non-issue.
Okay.
Alright.
Somebody wanna give me a motion that we will not change this?
We're motioning to not do something?
Yeah.
I don't think we are. We're, if, if we're not gonna change it, there's no motion to make.
Okay, alright.
Right.
Alright. So Kerry. Alright, I'll make this discussion vote on jail contract. I got a copy of both these, it's all west, Indiana stands, the cover, uh, the, our city attorney come up with some statutes, and he had more of that too. And I think he wants to bring them forward, so you got it for him.
Thanks, Barrett. I think, uh, in your package, there's a, a contract or an agreement that this is Sheriff Attorney County and the City of Sycamore that was executed on, or about the twenty-fifth day of August this year.
Yep.
In that packet is a contract that I drafted that makes, uh, Turner County the entity, the local subdivision, a party to that agreement. And the reason is, there's three statutes staked together in your package. One of the statutes says that in order for, uh, the ten percent to be collected and dispersed to the county, there has to be an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county. I mean, why I added the county's name to it. There's also a statute that says that the bill must be paid by the tenth day of the following month. That's statutory, I can't change that. So, uh, if you have any questions about the contract that I drafted versus the one that I, the mayor gave me, it looks like it was executed, I'll be happy to answer them. Uh, I will say this, we have Mr. Hester here, Sheriff Hester, Mr. Calhoun, Mr. Denham. I would like the council to acknowledge, and chief views well, if I may, that I had no involvement or persuasion about terminating this agreement. It's gotten back to me that I was pushing, it's word on the street, granted, that I was pushing to have this done, and I would like for that to be settled. Nobody here can claim that I come to them, it was, I had nothing to do with it. So, I want that put on the record that I had nothing to do with termination.
I know that on my part that you didn't, but let me let the chief speak about himself.
What's that?
What did he just say?
You weren't paying attention?
To be honest with you, no, sir, I was not. I'm not gonna lie, I said it was.
What I said was, is I had no involvement or persuasion in terminating the jail contract.
No, I mean, that, no, no.
I question. Can the, can, do the county commissioners have the statutory authority to assign to the sheriff, uh, the authority to act on the county's behalf in this regard?
That's gonna be a question for the county attorney to answer. But the statute clearly says there has to be a governmental, intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city. I'll provide the statute for you, in order for that ten percent to be collected and dispersed. There has to be, it even gives the date, it's January first nineteen ninety, any, any contract or agreement after that date has to involve those two legal subdivisions.
Okay, let me ask a question. Sheriff, you got a copy of this amended contract?
Not, not the one that he's talking about, where I've got the original, that has all three, and then I've got the one that we all agreed to, the recent one. I don't have a problem with it being added back to it.
Okay, well, here's, since I already got a copy of, here's, here's a copy. Y'all got any trouble with this?
We don't have a problem, that, well, I don't have a problem with that sentence, we don't have it with the other counties that, cities that give it to us, but, but if that needs to be in there to make it legal and y'all happy, that's fine. The, as long as the other stuff in the contract hasn't changed, I don't know.
Is there some material terms that I changed in there?
Okay, that, that, that may be.
We were gonna get to that in a minute.
In question.
I did change from the, the payment date from the fifth to the tenth, also added some indemnification language in there to protect the city. It's, it's essentially the same contract that you had with the sheriff in the county the first time.
Right.
The dates are different.
Okay.
It, it extended out for two years, I think. I think so too. But it's the same contract, I took the same one that I wrote last time and modified it to replace.
Okay, well, then, and this is just me, seeing me, y'all go have lunch, go through the contract, if y'all are happy with it, let us know. We'll vote.
Go ahead.
Can you just tell us what's he changed?
Well, I just found the typo. Um, I changed the per diem, uh, from forty to forty-five, and this is what I changed from the first contract into one now. Because there was, y'all had a meeting or whatever, and y'all agreed on forty-one year, and forty-five after that, the old contract had thirty-five. Put that language in there. I put, um, termination, I just found the typo, but the change of dates on that. I put some EMS language in there. I think I changed that, that's pretty much it.
Termination, what do you mean?
What do you mean?
You said you put some termination.
Put a termination clause in there, yeah.
What's the last contract?
Like the last contract, it's, it's identical except for the dates and the terms of, you know, the.
We had moved it to two years, and y'all had originally thirty days.
What do you mean, two years?
We took out, we took out the thirty-day notice about termination, and put in two-year contract.
I don't think we needed thirty-day notice.
Yeah, I don't wanna keep riding this wave every time somebody gets upset.
Yeah, and not counting the fact that, you know, if we terminated it, our money is gonna be going to some other county.
Not without a contract.
But even with a contract, if we contract with Irwin County, then our ten percent money be going to them. That means my county taxes will go up to cover that loss that they have. I'm not interested in that.
If, if I, if I could say, let's keep in mind, we all got the same goal in mind, putting bad people in jail.
That's right. Well, listen, Bill and I, Bill and I, whenever we all met, we shook hands, and we agreed, we can work through our issues we got with the jail. Thirty days just gives, you know, taking out the thirty days stops that ability to get mad about something, him or me, even one, 'cause it took my thirty-day ability out to, it wasn't just on y'all's side. I can't just get mad at y'all and say, well, Bill, you just gotta leave me in thirty days. The only thing that, if I'm doing something wrong down there, Bill couldn't bring it to my attention, if he wants to not take inmates there because we're violating the law, then that's fine. That's a different issue altogether. Same token, if he comes in there and violates somebody's rights, and we don't wanna do it, we gonna come back down here and say, listen, there's a law being violated, we need to do something. But we've shake, we've shake hands on this agreement, and there's the thing about the post-certified officers, the reason I took that out is, because if you got an employee here that comes to our jail, and comes in booking area with paperwork that's not certified, we're gonna let them in, so that wasn't even the need to put a post-certified person in there.
Well, fully, totally, that was my idea.
If we don't, if you got a secretary that needs to bring a, a piece of paperwork down there to come in jail, the reason I took the post-certified thing out is because I think every employee, you, you, Bill deems, or he deems that needs to come down and bring paperwork, we're gonna let them in there.
Alright.
In the booking area, now that, you know, it's, it's restricted, so, that's just, not needed, but, but that's just, that's getting into the weeds, when they do stuff like that, so.
If I may, the chief cannot unilaterally cancel the contract anyway, it takes a vote of the council. So, y'all can conduct a hearing on that, but it's my advice to you to not take it out.
What, and not take the thirty-day thing out?
Yeah, leave it in there.
No, no, I don't.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking, give you advice.
Okay, well, the, the thing about the thirty days is, it protects your agency, it protects our agency, it protects.
What it protects us from?
Things I'd rather not say in open session, on, on, on several different levels of abstraction, that we don't need to rehash.
Uh, yes, and, and every, every time we come in to meet like this, we're gonna be rehashing it over and over and over, and if you take out the thirty-day thing, we ain't got to rehash it no more. It, it'll make it null and void. And you won't have to rehash nothing. If, if the chief and the sheriff has a problem, they can talk man to man, get it straightened out. Period. Just if anything comes up, like the sheriff said, something going on illegal, or the chief saying something going on illegal, then it need to be brought otherwise. Other than that, the thirty days is, is null and void, in my opinion, because of that. We can't all sit down and talk about what the situation is without throwing paperwork at somebody. Then I think something's wrong with the system, if it does that. That's my opinion. But I, I just, the, the original contract that they signed, and they, matter of fact, I was at that meeting. And they shook hands on it and said, good to go. You know, you can cut down trees all day long, and make paper all day long. I'm, I'm just too old school, when I shake a man's hand, that's a contract, in my opinion. I understand that nowadays everybody's ready to sue you for nothing, I understand that completely. But also understand, I was raised, that a man's word has to decapitate or something. And if it don't cap, when you shake a man's hand and says, that's a done deal, I don't let, something wrong. And, and I, if I shake a man's hand and say, that's a done deal, I don't care if you cut down twenty million trees to make paper out of it, that ain't gonna change my mind, that that's a done deal.
But your mind's not the only one at work.
That's true, that's true, like I said, I understand all the legal stuff that goes on.
That's not.
Cause I ain't no lawyer, but what I'm saying is, as a representative, if I say I'm gonna do something, then I, I.
Well, that's also why the city attorney had a course in contract.
I understand that, and I understand that, that's why I said I am an attorney.
But that's, that's why we retain the services of one.
I understand.
I don't think anybody here would sign an employment contract for X number of years and not have the ability to get out of it. I don't think you would sign a contract for services for X number of years with, um, a cleaning crew or satellite, whatever, and not have the ability to get out of that contract. You don't wanna be held to something. It's nothing against the sheriff's office, it's nothing against the county, it's just good business sense to have a way out if you wanna get out of it. But the council ultimately has the vote to do it, the council has to vote to go back in, the council has to vote to terminate the contract.
If we get out, the money that's got to replace the money that we taking out, it's still gonna come out of our pocket on taxes, one way or the other. I mean, if the sheriff says it costs a million dollars a year to run a jail, and it's divided up between Ashburn and the county and Sycamore, and Sycamore pulls their money out, even though we pulled our money out, and we think we doing something, we're not, we're spending our wheels, we're making our taxes go up, because the jail is still gonna run whether we there or whether we're not. And so the thirty-day thing is just moot point to me. That we, it ain't like we can get out of the county just 'cause we got an out on a piece of paper. You can't get out of the county just 'cause we, you know, we live in this county, unless we wanna move. And even if we say, okay, sheriff, we don't want your business no more. We get a contract with another county, we got no voting powers in that county. We can't vote their sheriff out, we can't vote that county commissioners out, can't vote their city councils out.
This council can't vote that sheriff out.
The council can't, but the people can. The people, we are people that live in Sycamore, we live in Turner County. If we don't like what the sheriff is doing, we can campaign against it. If we don't like what the sheriff is doing in Irwin County, Tiff County, Worth County, what is it to you, you just got a piece of paper here.
That was made a contract.
It's a contract, but if they say, okay, you can't have here, we, we can't vote nobody out, we can't vote on nothing for them. All we doing is sending money to another county, that's all we're doing. You know, I, I guess, I guess my math is wrong, but whenever a jail has to have so much money to be run, and we take our part out and carry it to another county, next year when that jail's got run at the same amount, our taxes is gonna go up because we're not participating in that situation.
By that logic, we can simply solve the problem by not arresting anybody.
It don't matter if we ain't got nobody arrested, we still gonna have to pay.
Don't hang on the council, my eyes still on the floor a minute.
Mr. Mayor, uh, number one, I don't anticipate a need to terminate. If the council sees something, it's gonna have to be something rather drastic, that we don't anticipate at this time. I, I think we all agree on that. I don't think that the county or the sheriff's office are planning to, uh, in some way harm the City of Sycamore. I hope, I sure hope not. And the City of Sycamore has no desire to hurt Turner County or the sheriff's department. However, that being said, uh, I have to listen to, uh, the attorney's advice. It is simply a what-if provision in the contract, as, uh, Mr. Land wrote, to allow if something were to happen. It's not anticipated, it's not, uh, certainly not our desire, and, uh, but I think it would be foolish of us not to have a, for everybody's protection, the sheriff, the county, the city, of all three entities, to have the termination ability. Not that we plan to use it, as a matter of fact, that our greatest desire would be to keep the, keep the funding in Turner County. I mean, come on, like, I have to agree with Alan, I don't want my taxes to go up anymore than I can help. So, I would, I would say that it would be expedient for the city to go ahead and take the, uh, to consider the contract as written by our city attorney. There are several changes that had to be made by ordinance, adding the county and changing the due date. But other than that, I, I'd say would be wise to approve the, uh, the, uh, contract that Mr. Land wrote. And hopefully we'll never have to use a termination clause.
I'll ask a question of council. The original one that was signed, that's not valid, had the renewal period for two years. And the new one has a renewal period of one year, is there a reason?
One, I've read about, because one, there's a typo.
In section nine, it says this agreement, the old one that was signed by, by Wayne said this agreement will automatically renew for additional two-year periods unless dot, dot, dot. And the new one says, the agreement will automatically renew for additional one-year periods unless terminated.
The original contract had one, y'all could put two on there, two on two. Bottom line is this, until the council votes to approve the contract or disapprove it, that contract that's signed's not mine.
I understand that.
If you want two years in there, we'll put two years, there's a typo in here that I mistake I made, it's got twelve, that should have twenty-four months. If you want two years, I'll put a two-year period.
Yeah, I think we two years, we don't need to be doing this over and over and over. You know, we beat the same dog that's there, and I, I still, if we can't trust our sheriff enough,
I'll get to him.
Then, then we can vote him out. Uh, that's the way I look at it, Abby, I.
I, I agree with you one hundred percent.
I voted for you, but you, you understand what I'm saying? If we can't trust you to do right, then we don't need it on this way.
In the room of sheriff's office.
We don't need it on this way. We can do that at a ballot box.
Okay.
I just, I just wanna say, whatever statutory that needs to be changed, I'll, I'll fine with it, if, you know, the, the county needs to be added on there, I'll fine with it, the tenth of the month, day needs to be added on there, but the rest of it, I'm, we agreed on it, I, I want to stay with what we agreed to. Me and Bill. Me and Bill, you know, it, it'll, that thirty day thing is going forward. Me and Bill have to work together whether we want to or not. If we got two years, we're gonna know we're gonna have to work together whether he likes it or not, or I like it or not, we're gonna have to work together. If we can get, just get mad about, Bill, I'm not saying this in a derogatory manner, but at the last meeting, there was a lot of stuff said that was, that was, uh, shadow on the sheriff's office. It wasn't true. It could have been settled. I spent more time worrying about this right here than I would have spent handling it had he just said, listen, here's the problem, we need to fix it.
And I apologize.
And I, and I'm not, and I agree. I, I wasn't using that as something to throw you in the bus about. I'm just saying that that's what we're trying to avoid is that, um, if he gets upset or I get upset, we can't just, um, just do something.
To avoid that, we can do away with this thirty day thing and say, work it out.
I don't want to have to keep going up and down worrying about.
That's my deal only. That, that's just my deal.
Commissioner Calhoun, go ahead.
Uh, all I was gonna say, y'all know us. I mean, we're, if there's a problem at the jail, y'all can talk to us. We're right here. We're, we're not gonna hold you. Contract says you have to do this right here. We're not that person. We'll work it out. They will be able to simply work that ninety percent of it. But if it gets to a higher level, we're not gonna hold you to a thirty, you know, if, if you don't like it, if y'all build a jail, get it on, you know, or if y'all, you know, have to go somewhere else. We don't want bad blood. If they get to fighting too bad, it's better to separate. But I don't think they are, but, you know, y'all may want a jail.
Does everybody remember the garbage contract?
Yeah, I might remember the garbage contract.
The, the garbage contract was thirty years and was bad.
No termination clause.
And it was bad.
Yep.
And that was a company we couldn't deal with. Y'all know us. Y'all can deal with us. We can work it out.
Brad, you the one that write, said around town that I was behind all this. It's gotten bad.
Dustin?
I know who you are.
I do think you was behind. You're behind this right here, Dustin.
I'm doing my job, Brad. If you can ask anybody here, I had nothing to do with the termination. Nothing.
You had nothing to do with termination clause, two years?
No, the termination of the initial jail.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the termination clause.
I wrote it on behalf of my clients, Brad, and it's my counsel, but they don't sign it. Your lawyer would say the same thing. He's gonna counsel for you.
Yes, that's, I, I understand that, but, but our lawyer don't stand up at a meeting and talk. Our lawyer, if we ask him a question, he says something. The, he don't give us that kind of advice, but that's a, y'all, I'm just saying, y'all can talk to us if there is a problem in the contract in the future. We just, two years, just.
I didn't ask attorneys for any of these provisions in here. I sat down and done that. And when y'all came, that's what I presented. I, all I did was ask for the original contract.
I'm, I'm all right with everything except thirty day out. That's all I'm saying. I'm, I'm not in agreement with because we throwing tax money somewhere else. I don't agree with that. We all need money as it is. Let's throw it into another county. I don't agree with that unless we absolutely have to, you know.
May I, may I interject with a question for, uh,
Yes.
Council, Commissioner Calhoun. Does the county or sheriff's department, either one or both, have a problem with a termination clause which goes for either direction? You can terminate or the city could. Do you have a problem with that being in there?
Yeah, I think the sheriff has a, a problem with that being in there.
The reason I have a problem with it being thirty days is because we're gonna do this. If, if somebody gets upset again, just like last time, instead of coming and saying, hey, I got a problem, let's fix it. Then we're just getting mad and say, we're just gonna pull out. We're gonna have thirty days. We're gonna notify you and we're gonna pull out. Over something that was no, it, it wasn't even an issue. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I got a problem with it being thirty days. If, uh, I, I think two years is enough time that, uh, if you want to get out in two years, you get out in two years. Um, you can, at the end of that two years, if y'all want to go somewhere else, go somewhere else.
When it comes back to bite you, I'll say I told you so. Just tell him.
I'll be the first one to holler out.
It's too late then, though, Alan.
Yeah, it might be too late, but I, I just, as a citizen in Turner County.
But you're acting as a councilman right now.
Exactly. I'm, I'm, I'm the best, the best guy in Sycamore. He stays with, with, with the clause out of, with the.
If that's what y'all vote on.
That's actually the way I look at it. Is there anything statutory about thirty days?
Why would you bind yourself to something you can't get out?
I, that's my point.
Bad sense to do that on anything, any kind, any kind of agreement.
All right. Are we still talking about a twenty-four month contract?
Yeah.
Raise it to sixty days. Two months. Raise it sixty days. That way in two years, there's only twelve opportunities. If we can't sort out a problem in two months, we got no business being on this council and you got no business being commissioner.
Can I say this? The last time y'all voted authorized to terminate the contract, I hand delivered a notice of termination to the sheriff and to Brad, Mr. Calhoun, who's acting sheriff at the time. I'm assuming nobody got a call from either one of them about what's going on. It's not likely they don't get noticed. It's in the contract that every party gets noticed. So you have that amount of time to address it. So if they have a concern about you canceling the contract and you put thirty or sixty days in there, then they have time to contact you. Now, whether they will or not, I don't know. Apparently it wasn't reported to Mr. Calhoun because he never called you guys and said, what's going on with this?
Who has the ability to cancel the contract?
Majority vote of the council.
It's got to be in a meeting, correct?
Yes, yes.
I, I still.
You can't do it. I can't do it. Collectively, we'd have to do it by majority vote.
But we won't have the ability unless the contract is off.
Right.
Go ahead. The, uh, I thought it in there. The, uh, yes, when you called me, I called.
I didn't call you. I dropped it all.
Correct. When I was giving the piece of paper, I called Wayne, I believe, and tried to talk to Wayne about it and we just couldn't. I don't think, I think Wayne wanted to fix, Wayne wanted to fix it. I tried to talk to Mr. Bill about it. The, uh, I did care. The, we, I tried to work it out.
Me neither.
Tried to work it out. We don't want y'all to leave. Yep. We want y'all at our jail. One hundred.
I don't like the sound of that. Let the record reflect.
We want you here and I do care very much. The, uh, and I did try to address it. I didn't call. I, I, I would love to have all of y'all's phone numbers. I, I, I've talked to Clay about it. He probably gets tired every so time in the fire class because I, I get on him there. We, we talk. But I would love to have all of y'all's phone numbers.
If I may, I got numbers posted.
Well, if we could just.
If I may, we meet once a month, all of the things being.
And, and we would be glad to go to twelve months.
We meet once every month and somebody, whoever, with all the goodwill in the world, somebody can get a mad on and that mad doesn't get addressed until the next month. If we change this from thirty days termination to sixty days, that gives you guys the opportunity to show up at our meeting. That gives us the opportunity to show up at your meeting. And we can hash it out in open forum where everybody expresses everybody's opinion and everybody knows everybody's thoughts.
I want to stay out of it. I want to let them to.
They can't, Brad. That's the problem.
Why do I got to get in the middle of a jail?
Because you're.
Because you're the county commission chairman. It, it's statute, Brad. It says the county and the city have to do it. The sheriff and the chief can't even make that agreement, Brad. It has to be the two government entities to do it.
My point is the problems are normally something that I have none. I have zero to do with the jail. Zero.
You funded. You know, you're the county commissioner, Brad.
I don't, he can't control who comes in and goes out of the jail.
But he, he's got to make the contract.
Just for the contract, just for the contract purpose. That's the only thing he can do is to sign for the contract purpose. He can't make me take inmates from anybody. Can't tell me how to run the jail, any of that.
You know what he can do? He can cut your budget.
He can do that, but he still has to pay for me to run it. The law says he has to do that and pay for me over just, so, yeah, you're right. He, he can cut it to zero. But I, by statute can run the jail and take care of citizens of this county. They have to pay the bill. But the part, here's the issue is that, again, Bill, I don't mean to.
You ain't, you ain't bothering me. I'm, listen, I stand on.
I don't think that I should have called anybody when this happened. I didn't have the problem. The problem was is that Bill had a problem. Bill should have called me and we would have handled the problem. It wouldn't even have got to this point. But now we're at this point where we're sitting here talking about a contract again and I, we didn't do anything wrong. There were some issues I agree with Bill on and then we worked them out. But I, why am I have to change and, and I, I'm trying to eliminate more headache for me in the future when he can come to me at any time and talk to me about a problem. There, we do, we do a budget every year. If y'all want to do a twelve-month contract because a budget falls at that time, let's do it from budget year to budget year. That's fine with me too because then they'll know as commissioners, when they're budgeting, whether y'all are gonna be in the jail or not and know what we have to budget or not. So I don't have a problem with twelve months. I can, I could weather that better than I can sixty days, but the problem is, is that me and Bill sit down and we work this out. And, um, that's all it takes. If I have a problem, I call Bill. If it's with the police department, I call him because he runs the police department.
We have conversed, I think, every week, couple times a week since all this up props. I mean, we, we say that.
But, okay, we can change it. I, I go along with twelve months and no out.
No thirty days.
I go along with that.
I want it on the record that I'm counseling the city council against that.
For the record, as the fiduciary of the city of Sycamore, I have to defer to our legal counsel in this regard. Whether I like it or whether I don't. I consider that an obligation. Okay? We have fiduciary obligation, taxpayers of this city.
Why did you say the sixty days of official process? But you don't want his bad business to sign a contract making.
No termination.
That you can't get out of regardless of who is.
Yeah, because they can't get out of it either if there's no termination clause.
One part of the contract is where the, where it goes from twelve, forty dollars to forty-five dollars at the end of twelve months. If we go to a twelve-month contract, we can also renegotiate that if we want to stay at forty, if we want to go to thirty-five, if we've got to go to fifty. We can do all, everything at one time on the twelve-month contract.
Well, as, as, uh, Yol Brown said, with no termination contra, no termination clause in here, uh, for the first twelve or in, as you're suggesting, you're twenty-four months, we're stuck. We, all of us, the county, the sheriff, the city, we're stuck. And I, I don't want to see anything like that happen. Uh, I would suggest that possibly changing the thirty to a sixty. Uh, I just asked the council and he said he has no problem with that. It would be a termination clause. What does, what is the consensus on the rest of the council?
I would concur with that. And also, we, we have to keep in mind that this is not something one individual can decide on. This would necessitate a majority vote of the council.
Yeah, but I just did my.
And, and I've, I've lived in Sycamore since January the thirtieth, two thousand nine. The only time this came up was once.
Well, here's my theory on why I want to stay in Turner County. You see, if I ever got put in, in jail.
But listen, listen, the president's here, Mr.
And my mama had to come pick me up from her house right here in Sycamore. That ain't been about seven minutes. I would probably get a good chewing out. If my mama hadn't picked me up in Irwin County, she got a lot of time to fiddle with in here in Irwin County. And I would have a sermon. I would be begging the sheriff of Irwin County, look here, just cut this to fifteen minutes. You know, we just don't have fifteen-minute visits. We're not gonna have an extended hour. We're gonna cut this slow.
Councilor Coker, I can confirm that, sir. If you end up in jail anywhere, there's gonna be a whole lot of sermons on you.
They probably already are anyway, so I ain't worried about the sermon, except coming from my mom. I'd rather her be able to visit me in Turner County than I have Turner County.
And Turner County Jail have been doing business forever. We had one incident come up and now we've got a hornet's nest turned up over one incident. I don't see why twelve months is unfair for us or y'all. I mean, let's do the twelve months, get it done and let's go home.
I'll go with twelve months.
And I want to say this too, um, it was brought out earlier that y'all's, works guy over there should handle all of that. Are you fine with twelve months on your contract?
I'm sorry we're in this whole thing and I really am. But I, I, but I, man, it's my fault. But, yeah, I'm fine with twelve as long as you're good with twelve. If you're good with twelve, I'm good with twelve. And I know that's not what they're all saying, but I don't have a vote.
But you're the chief and you run the police department. If they use the same terminology they used a while ago, then you're the one that make that decision and, and.
But that's not the case, council.
That's not the case.
I'm fine with the case law being changed as far as the statute goes, the tenth of the month and the, the Turner County being added. And, uh, twelve months, get out of clause during the fiscal, you know, during our fiscal year. Whatever, what are y'all following, July or July one?
It's when we start the fiscal year.
If you want.
I don't think this council needs to make a contract and be held hostage because of the fiscal condition that the county's in. And that's what it sounds like this is going to. And you're gonna be bound by something and you're not gonna get out of it. So you vote how you want to, but I'm telling you, when it bites you, I won't.
But that's the same. We don't get to vote how we want to. We have to vote in the best interest of the residents and the taxpayers of this city. And that's, that's one of the fundamental issues. You guys, county commissioners, we're city council. Y'all got a bigger fish to fry in a bigger pan. As, as, as the recent budget meeting over the summer clearly illustrated.
So we, we gonna have to tell our citizens that the reason our county taxes went up is because we wanted to go somewhere else.
Nobody wants to go anywhere else.
Well, then that's the thing right here where we at. We can say, we're, we're, we're. I have to get to sixty days. I tell you what, make it every six months, we review it.
Councilman Coker, you got to remember you're a fiduciary of this city.
Exactly. And I, I'm, I'm also a taxpayer of this city and this county.
And if you get this city into a contract you can't get out of for whatever length of time, whether it does or whether it doesn't, you're not serving public trust.
I also don't want my tax money.
Not to do what?
And the city's tax money to go to another county. I don't think that's a good fiduciary for the city if you carry your money to another county.
Well, it's not going to go, council member Coker, if this council does not make a contract with another county.
But if we don't have anywhere to put our inmates, then we do have to have a con- contract with another county temporarily. It will be an issue then. My deal is, let's just go one year and blind think and just say, okay, let's just see what it's gonna do for one year. And after one year, if we all got heartburn or whatever, let's lay it out on the table, get it straightened out. And then if you want to put a thirty day or a sixty day or a ninety day or whatever, we'll do it then. But one year, let, let, let's just have a, a peace agreement for one year. I think we can do that. And then if something comes up and somebody wants to start butting heads, then we'll deal with that. But until then, let's have a good debate between the city and the county. I mean, I pay taxes on both of them. And I don't want, I don't want my county taxes going up because I, as a city council member, decided to send my money somewhere else. That's, that's not good business in my opinion.
So I, I'm gonna, I, I'd like to kind of say something. I look at this as a, as a situation where in, in, in a, in a sort of, not, not exactly similar, but close to it, that this is almost like a rental agreement that we are renting jail cells from the sheriff's department for our inmates.
Fair analogy.
Okay? If I sign a rental agreement with anybody for a term of a twelve-month rental agreement, I have to pay a deposit. If I cancel that, I don't get my deposit back if I get out of my rental agreement, you know, without some sort of just cause. I'm not saying that there should be deposits or anything like that, but I'm saying that there's gotta be a situation where if the sheriff's department decided tomorrow to change all of their policies and procedures for how they operate the jail and that's not something that we want our inmates or our citizens to have, we've got to have an ability to say, that's not what we're on board with. If we can't control what the sheriff's department does, okay, I just look at it as a, that kind of concept. If we sign an agreement today, you could ask, you know, the head of the sheriff's department or camp, or the, the camp. If we sign an agreement today, you could, as, you know, the head of the sheriff's department, or camp, or the, the council, could decide how you wanna change things up. I don't know what it would be, but let's say it's something we don't agree with. I think that just common sense says we've gotta be able to stay at that point, that is not good, and we've gotta have an, an ability to say, "We're not on board with that." And that if you decided, the day after the fiscal year happens, and the contract is signed, to change everything up, we shouldn't have to be, wait for twelve more months before we can make that change. I'm not saying that it should be a thirty-day clause. I think we can all agree that maybe we could extend that to sixty or even ninety days. But it would have to be under some, you know, extenuating circumstances.
Something greater egregious.
Sure.
Go ahead. If for no other reason because there's a typo on this, we gotta take another run at this, don't we, counsel?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, I need to type it up, but you can vote to approve it as, as amended, but...
Since you need to type it up, why don't y'all talk to New York's county attorney, and have him sit down and eat some barbecue with our city attorney, and let them sort this out to a mutually agreeable contract? Because you need to consult with your attorney on this anyway, and we're consulting with ours now.
We, we, we are the elected board, he is the sheriff, y'all are the elected board. We're using lawyers a little too much. I don't wanna call our lawyer and ask him nothing about it. I want us to be able to be grown people and talk to each other if we got a problem. And, and, I mean, that's, that's what we are...
I love that idea, we don't live in that world anymore.
We do, I do, I do.
That, that's the world we talking about, we need to get to...
I'm a state employee. For example, I cannot legally give you my word on anything, 'cause it might violate my contract with the state. It's not what I like, it's not the way I personally court myself, it's the law.
It ain't my law.
It's state law.
What is state law?
I cannot give you my personal word on anything. I cannot give you my personal word, it's raining outside, which, by the way, it's raining outside. I can't do that, because that might violate my contract with the state.
Well, I think we need to solve this tonight.
I, I think y'all need to decide, how many, thirty days, sixty, a year, the, you know, wha- whatever y'all can come up with, because that's really the only question that I know of so far. And I, it's not up to me, it's up to the sheriff.
I make a motion that goes to a year.
Do what, Alan, I'm sorry?
I make a motion that, uh, the termination clause lasts one year. You know, up to one year, not thirty days, three hundred and sixty-five days.
Do we have a second behind this motion? No, I don't...
I move for a sixty-day termination notice, second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second on sixty-day termination notice, I wouldn't waive them. That is for four, everyone, you want to go against? Oh, against Coker, against. So, Carrie?
I ain't gonna be signing that, I'm here. I ain't gonna be signing that.
I wouldn't sign it. I wouldn't sign it, I didn't. You on here, on checklist. All right, item number nine, department data.
I don't have anything besides what we talked about with Stacy earlier. That's all, uh, the trucks being ordered.
You, you gonna have to speak up.
Otherwise, I saw that.
You got it.
Okay.
I'm waiting on, uh, Ben to give me information, that he reached a limited liquidation base, and, uh, we're waiting on the, as soon as they agree on the bill, then we're gonna do the swap with our truck and money and all that, but that ain't, that's... Huh?
No, no, not like.
Uh, I, I want, it's a gray, I just have to pull back the name of the gray.
One thing, I might mention, well, they look at a, uh, bourbon, the old truck, first inside, out of leather, and where nothing can happen, it'll maintain its, its trade in value.
It's just, if you're one out there to give me a reference of color, not that I'm never... All right, so, nothing?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Bill's already left.
Bill's walked out, so, uh, right now, uh...
You got one of the department heads here?
One of, yeah, I got one thing I need to bring up, that Ashley wanted me to bring up. Oh, she got a sales agreement, uh, price our unit here that we record. Oh, she wanna get another one, want it to be used on the purpose of court. That way, it keeps these two separate, and if one goes down, then we can use the other one too.
How much money you talking about?
Uh, one thousand point teen dollars.
And what budget is that gonna come out of?
We've got a fifteen-hundred-dollar budget item for equipment.
That can be split between, uh, court, or, well, it can come out of court, or we can split it between court and administration.
Well?
Is it gonna be used for court, is it gonna be used for administration?
It would be used for court. But, this one goes down, then it will be...
Already spent twenty-four hundred, that's a three-thousand-dollar budget for court.
Whose budget did that one come out of?
Administrative.
That's right.
Then this one comes out of court budget.
There's no money in the court budget.
Whoopsie.
Yeah, uh...
They already spent twenty-four hundred dollars on equipment out of three thousand.
We've already used part of the three thousand, uh, in the court budget, we've used twenty-four hundred dollars of it.
About what? And they got six hundred left?
Well, did they buy with that twenty-four hundred?
I'm not, I don't go right offhand. I know that they had to buy some, some items. Uh, probably back in the, uh, court clerk office.
Yeah, they do have contingency there.
The contingency is in there.
Contingency is what we pay a...
Split.
Vanish lady.
I'm okay with split.
And, if nothing else, we do have...
Can we use that as a clause?
What's actual clause to be used on that?
On what?
This recorder.
Court equipment.
That's, that's a lot of range.
I, I don't know, I need to look at the statute.
From what I remember on, on this clause, special purpose, it's not included, uh, equipment of that nature is not included.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I know, I know, it's included, yeah.
All right, let's cut to the chase. Uh, I'll, I'll move that we purchase the new recording equipment, split the cost between court and administrative.
Second up. Okay, we got a motion, a second, I'll pay it. Good. So, Carrie? All right, any public input?
Yes. Sorry, I promised I'll be very fast.
It's, it's raining.
I have no idea what I said, you come to this meeting. But I'm Kristy Casemiro, I'm really excited to be the new branch manager here. We are introducing all kinds of programming, uh, activities at the library. We're trying to have free weeks for the kids, we're doing like reading programs with the kids, to the kids, and having the kids read out loud. Um, we are having a lot of success with our, um, fundraising on Amazon, with our Amazon wishlist, and we're excited to be getting into the schools, we're gonna be going and reading to all of the elementary school classrooms, and we're gonna be having all the elementary school classrooms come and do field trips with the library. And, uh, I'm just thrilled to be here, and I'm sorry that it's such a long meeting, but I just wanted to say hi, and let y'all see my face, and I'd love to see you guys in the library. Yes.
I don't know if you've already got a project to test, have the kids come in and get pine cards. I gue- I guess they still do pine cards?
So, I would love to have them do that, but they need to have a guardian with them, a parent or guardian, but absolutely.
Well, I can't imagine a bunch of minor children gonna be coming to the library all by themselves.
Oh, right, right, um, so, starting on October first, um, calendars are going on with every kid, every month, so it'll have the information about how to get the library card, and what the calendar events are for the library.
I'm trying to twist it, y'all gonna be in, if I don't, look at y'all, 'cause I know y'all trying to sell books.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're selling them, and, and that's ending this week, so, we don't, we, we could use, um, brand-new books, or books in very good condition, that we can add to our collection that we don't already have.
Okay, 'cause I think, look, I'm in the same line of work as your husband, I read prodigiously.
Yeah, yeah, certainly, both of us do, yeah. But, thank you for your time, sorry to extend the meeting.
Point of information.
Yes.
Uh, the city of Sycamore, uh, has budgeted a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar contribution, which we normally, we have not paid this fiscal year, but we normally pay in January. Let us know where we stand.
Okay, that was gonna be what I was gonna say, Kristy gets to take the fun stuff, and then I, uh, come up with the money stuff to say...
She said the word fundraising.
Yes, yes. To say, um, and this is just for you all to, to, uh, put in your thought pattern as you start thinking about budgets for whatever your next budget cycle may be. Um, thank you, Mr. Astor, for that commitment for seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I do wanna let you know, um, one of the, uh, unique things about Turner County, because of some of the funding issues that we have in the library, is that we actually had to, when we rehired our branch manager, we had to make her part-time, because insurance is quite expensive, so, uh, there are several things that Kristy would love to do, either believe or not, beyond what she's already doing. There are other things she'd love to do, but we can't commit to that until we are able to increase local funding. So, we are, again, this is not asking for money tonight, but it's letting you know of the situation with the library. We are approaching every funding agency, uh, to say that, in order to restore your branch manager for the Victoria Evans Memorial Library to full-time, we would need an additional thirty-five thousand dollars a year.
That's school board, too.
Yeah, no, not, that's what I'm saying, the school board did double their contributions, the county restored some cuts that they had made, and again, we're going to every funding agency, so if you happen to be in any of those meetings, you're gonna hear the same statement from us, that we just had it at the Board of Education in the other night.
Any funding from the state?
We, so, funding from the state filters through the regional library system, and we use that to provide services, so our, uh, financial services, our tech services, all those kinds of things come through, uh, the regional library, that's what we use to save money. Your other funding agencies are county, city, Board of Educat, that's, uh, City of Osilla, Rebecca, Sycamore, and Ashburn, I'm so sorry. Six counties, sometimes, I do apologize, I try very hard. So, we have, uh, funding from three cities in Turner County, also Turner County, and the Board of Education, so... That's, that's just to put it, as you all are thinking, any extra that you might be able to see in your budget to increase comes as chivalry and honor. Thank you all so very much. Yes, thank you guys so much.
Bill, you got any money?
Item eleven, pay bills.
We'll pay bills.
Got a motion, a second, I'll pay them.
We'll go home.
Second.